Meeting of the Toledo City Council for December fourth, two thousand and twenty four to order. First item is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a roll call. Counselor Mix.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Counselor Strong is excused. Counselor Sylvia.
Yes.
Counselor Burns. Counsel President Bush.
Here.
And I am here. We have six. We have a forum to conduct business. First item, visitors' public comments. Is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to address counsel this evening? Please come forward, John. State your name for the record.
John Mix. Um, so I got a few things. I won't start the timer now, but first thing is my main concern is the old bank building that you're turning into police station. The uh. You know, they put vapor bear on there. I got wore off in the storm or whatever. Now they put more expensive vapor. And there's no siding. It's sort of just curious. On what is going on there because I don't think it will make it through the winter if they don't get a siding on there. So. So about that. Another thing is the house across from the bowling alley. It's been years and years. That that thing is just the blackberries are taking over and that thing is just. Falling apart. And how come the ordinance isn't going after those people? The bank or the state or whoever owns it. Now, the other one is across from the Alala Center. The wall's falling down the sidewalk, all that. That house has fallen apart and everything. Uh, ordinance isn't going after them too. And then the last thing is, um, Commissioner Sutherland pointed out that there was a park with the over by the pool. Tire swing, uh, structure for that has fallen apart and that should be roped off so that nobody gets hurt and replaced. And so I want to point that out. Um, that's basically my rant for the day.
John, you're so polite. Um, we are quite aware of a couple of those items, um, and we'll make sure that your concerns get forwarded to Public Works and the other people who need to be notified.
Yeah.
Um, I can tell you that we have been citing some of those people into court. Um, so there are some on work orders. We'll put it that way. Um, but otherwise. Part of the reason why we had to make that ordinance was to be able to get people's attention. And so hopefully we are working toward that.
So the, as far as the old bank building goes, that's like my concern.
Mm hmm.
But, um.
You're not the only one. Yeah.
And like, uh. City employees working on that or?
Oh, that is construction company that is trying to be reached out to extremely soonly to. Um, well, I don't know about that, but yeah.
Burger maybe.
We, we've, we've already been going after them. We're actively working on it because we.
The contractor.
Concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
That's a good way of answering it right there.
Thank you, John.
It's nice that you came.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it. Yeah, I was gonna bring up about the houses the end of the meeting, so.
Wow, you could have made two of us.
Yeah, well, I had a thought after talking to Ron, but I'll do it in the council report.
Great.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? Jim?
Nope.
Are you sure?
Are you just here out of the goodness of your heart?
No, I'm still a little reluctant to express any more comments about this moving along. Still, uh. Oh, it's the steering committee.
Jim, come on up.
We want to hear.
Your steering committee is, is almost non-existent. You know, nobody stepping forward to pursue it. I know you guys are very busy. I've recognized that. But, you know, we were contacted by the architect in May and stuff, but we're losing more time than what we have.
Well, I haven't even been reached out to.
I haven't either. I haven't gotten any.
Because there's nobody doing it.
Are you talking about on the pool board side?
A pool board side or your side. Nobody is stepping forward to say, let's have a meeting. And, you know, it, it's fine. It's just drags on and what it's gonna do is it's just gonna push everything.
I, I, I understand. So.
Wasn't there some concern? Weren't we talking about there was concern because stuff coming down from FEMA about whether or not we could do the expansion of it over the tennis courts? Was that gonna change things?
Okay, the issues. Okay.
But years down the road, you're not the money in it.
The, the current plan, as it sits right now with the money available, does not involve FEMA getting involved.
Okay.
Okay? It's only if we go for the gym later on does FEMA get involved at that point.
Well, I thought, I, my understanding was that right off the bat, so I misunderstood.
I thought we were.
We had to go to faces.
Okay.
No, we've got, we've got the numbers. We just gotta, we gotta say, okay, it's going out for RFP. We've gotta have that okay. So.
So Jim, how could we facilitate another meeting and getting that going?
How can we do that? It's real simple. I'll pick up the dang phone while I'm on the road tomorrow and I'll make phone calls and we'll get a stupid meeting put together. I, I'm sorry, Jim. I assumed that the pool was still running the show on that. That's, I'll take it.
Well, if they're running it, we don't have anybody running it.
Well, I'll, I'll get on it, Jim.
I appreciate it. Uh. You know, whole house made a resolution and agreeing to go along with the, uh, CMGC.
Right.
And they've also, um, put Peter Bensy, um, and Roy Kenyon and, um. And Joe Wallace, all on a ability to speak for the rest of the.
Okay.
On getting the RFP out and also signing off.
Oh, Mike, we're gonna need a short, um, URA meeting then on the eighteenth. It sounds like we're getting close to being able to sign some things. So let's work on making sure that happens. I'll get together. I'll call those folks tomorrow and we'll get a meeting put together and make that happen, Jim.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor, uh, Council, from our meeting last time, um, I'm still planning to have the high two. Trying to RFP about.
It's the alarm.
That was the alarm, Jim.
He's trying to cut me off. I was in. Sounded almost like Star Wars.
Yeah.
No, whose pageantry is happening here?
My.
All right. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate it.
Okay. It's my pageant.
All right, anyone else? Anyone online?
If there's anyone online who'd like to speak to the council, please raise your hand electronically so you can be recognized. There are no hands raised.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move to consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the meetings, June fifth, two thousand and twenty four, July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four, August seventh, two thousand and twenty four. The town hall held on October twenty third, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty four, and the executive sessions held September tenth, two thousand and twenty four, September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four, and November sixth, two thousand and twenty four.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented from.
Just say, Frank, you can say, I approve the consent agenda.
Okay. That, what you said.
Okay.
Second that.
I thought I had to read all the dates.
No, I have to do that. You don't. All right, it's been moved by Frank, seconded by Tracy to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the meetings of July, June fifth, two thousand and twenty four, July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four, August seventh, two thousand and twenty four. The town hall held on October twenty third, two thousand and twenty four, and the executive sessions held September tenth, two thousand and twenty four, September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four, and November sixth, two thousand and twenty four. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Will we frame this?
No comment. All right, discussion items, consideration of bonus for police department employees. Amanda?
I was counsel. Um, I've worked with Counselor Burns the last few days between last week and this week, and, um, we had some conversations. At this time, we're just looking at, considering potential bonuses for police chief position. Um, counsel, that was Counselor Burns' wish at this time to consider because of the realization that for one, he's, his salary is way below what it should be. And the other staff does get overtime for all the hours that they put in and the chief does not. Um, additionally, I mean, I have concerns as well about doing police staff at this time because when we're doing that for union employees, we need to look at the entire union, which would include fire and not just police. So I don't think it's appropriate to do for one and not evaluate all. So we can have that conversation in the future if council wishes, but we need to look at all of that. So I did, um, put together a bonus for having to send it out, but been very busy.
So I don't need to recuse myself?
No, this is specifically for Chief Pace.
Okay.
Um, and a couple of things that we discussed to consider. Um, one consideration, and I'll let Counselor Burns speak to this, um, would be to give a one-time bonus. Another would be to discuss, um, bringing his position forward with the salary increase. Sooner rather than later, or possibly both. So we'll leave that to council. Um, just a little explanation about what I provided you. Um, we were able to gather comparisons for surrounding areas, local to leave, excuse me, I can't talk, police chief salaries, and this is the top end for each of these agencies. This is where ours sits compared to the others. You can see where it's bottom. Um, I provided the salary scale for your reference. And to them, for more information, um, we, I do want council to be aware that I do feel that we have room in the budget if you wish to consider this. We did budget for fourteen point three FTEs in that department, and we are extremely short-staffed, so we are way below budget in the salary department.
So is this, and where it says, but, uh, percentage of police personnel budget expended, is that through like December first?
It's through the November payroll, December first, so five months in.
Right. That, that's what I was getting at. Thank you.
Yep. And then I provided the budget output for your reference.
Thank you very much.
So if I may, we, we talked about, um. Uh, first of all. A bonus that would be significant enough to really acknowledge and compensate, compensate him for his, his service and the low pay that he'd been. Going out to him. And then also we talked about, um, a salary adjustment. Starting next year so that, uh, and, you know, Amanda was saying like on this first graph that we should probably be in the middle of the. Of this first page here.
Right.
And, and.
Well, 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 but why would we be? Because.
I'm sorry, Tracy, why would we be in the middle? I mean, you're comparing it to cities ten times the size as ours. Well, I, I'm, what I'm proposing is that if the money is in the budget to do it. Then why would we keep him down? So.
A, a question I have.
Okay.
Um, so is it Tillamook County, so that the sheriff, or is that Tillamook, the city?
So it can.
Tillamook County.
It's only county. Okay.
So.
They're super underpaid.
So, yeah. And, and keep in mind that take kind of all of this with a grain of salt. For one thing, you know, this, this is the current salary information available from each of these agencies. Some of them have updated their salaries more recently than others. So some of them are more up to date. Um, and also most towns our size do not have their own police force.
Right.
So while it, on the one hand, we do like to compare ourselves to similar sized cities, that's all, not always a fair representation. So we need to keep that in mind. And also we're competing with these laboring agencies. If you look at Newport, they're currently hiring right now for a chief that tops out at one fifty. So I mean, we need to just keep all of that in mind when we're looking at these things.
Well, our comparable on here, one of the, the place that we've used as a comp over the years has been Philomena. And even with their growth, they're only fourteen hundred people currently ahead of us.
The part that kind of disgusts me, and I hate to say it, but. Our chief is only making seventeen hundred dollars more than a three-strike sergeant.
Right.
Yeah.
I know, I, I understand. I know.
And then the sergeant also receives quite a bit of overtime.
Overtime and everything else, right? That's, yeah.
They're getting paid more than he does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Overtime.
Definitely.
And he's working more than that.
That's what I'm getting at. Should not be paid that miniscule as opposed to the sergeant. No, not taking anything away from Spencer because he's a great guy, but.
On the books for that position for three years.
At least.
Can I throw something out there?
Fire.
Tracy confirmed this, but aren't bonuses taxed at like sixty percent? There's some insane I got tax rate.
That's not true.
They're not considered income. They're.
It's considered income.
But it's, the tax base is tiered, so for your whole income, so there's a percentage, um, and it's parceled out, the percentage of tax that you pay based. There are certain thresholds and once, once you hit a certain amount, it's taxed at this rate.
Okay.
And then the next amount is.
It might slip you into the next tax bracket.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's not.
Yeah, but just being a bonus doesn't tax it any higher than, you know.
Okay, I saw that.
It's the same rate as any other income. Yeah.
Okay. So i- is it possible that we could, uh, come up with a bonus amount to be awarded to Chief Pace? This month and then visit when we have another meeting, just unless we can do it now, I don't know. Uh, visit what we can move his salary to. I don't know how long it takes to do stuff.
We just gave him an increase in salary, didn't we? I know it wasn't enough, but didn't we just give you an increase in salary?
And it was taken away.
I was gonna say.
Oh, we didn't go back and we didn't go back.
No, so while the.
So the, the student who was on leave, um, did that action before he was gone. Um, I have. Not felt it appropriate to make any changes during this time, um.
Because the.
Because of every, the situation, so I'm holding off until something's resolved.
Well, I don't think it.
But we can.
We can.
And I think we should.
Yeah.
I think absolutely.
And, and so, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking of the times when we've sat here and listened to the appeal, you know, Chief Pace has talked multiple times about. Need help with retention, need somebody to get me. I mean, he's just grasping at straws. There's that. And then the dispatch, I mean, all of it just reeks. And so we, we need to be, I believe, a little more proactive, a lot more proactive. So that we're paying on to our people, uh, that I remember when we were going through budgeting and it, and even when it was presented, here's the wage range. And we, as a council, selected the low end of the range, which didn't, but I don't know enough to say anything. And personally, and admittedly, you lack the courage to say, wait a minute, but, so.
There's a reason for that. It's because if we're fully staffed, we can't afford anything.
Yeah.
But we're not. The only reason we can afford this is because we're not staffed. So we're trying to catch twenty-two.
Oh, I set that up. They were setting it up as to plan to be fully staffed. That's why it was set up. So when, forgive my.
I have to look at.
Meaning any effects.
No, no, I'm not taking any of that. I'm just saying why.
So one thing I would like to point out though is we also have to budget for quite a bit of overtime because we're continuously short-staffed.
Right.
And I do believe if we look at that, that if we increase the salaries, we would have a more full, consistently full police force, and we wouldn't require all of that overtime. So I think there's a give and take there where it would balance out.
When do we do budget again? I know I'm, I'm gonna be.
Lots of summer, so.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, no, no.
Budget starts in February.
Starts in February.
So I am actually also currently in process. I've ordered millimeter studies. I'm gonna be grabbing comps where we were planning to.
You ordered what?
Uh, salary surveys.
Okay.
Um, that are professionally done, um, for pub, Oregon public employers and other agencies.
Yes, that's been in the works and.
Yes, and we are actively working on a salary comparison so that we can bring the survey to council for a, for a summary of our staff.
Staff, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
And we just got a big correction for the Toledo Employee Association, but it's been no one else.
I know. I, I'm just.
Miss, she's just got lots of other stuff.
I, yeah, just a few things. Um. So I would like to recommend, um, at this time, because we don't have the salary study back yet. Because I, I have, I have a s, it, it, how do I say? It's, I have a tiny bit of heartburn. Pushing his, if all the, if our other staff that are in the same management level are as woefully underpaid as, as he is. I would like to ra, I would like to rather raise them all to the correct levels at once. So my thought is give him the five percent, give him a five percent bonus right now, which works out to fifty-seven hundred dollars.
Twenty percent.
Well, because I'm thinking about what he was supposed to have gotten during all of this time. Before. That's why.
And that's why I'm saying twenty percent.
The five percent would just bring him back to what was taken away in August.
Okay, then you, so twenty percent would be.
And it's been out since August.
And then when we have that gives us time for the salary study and then when we do that, we can bring his pay to where it should be. But until then.
I'm, I'm fine with your number. I'm just, I'm, I'm doing the math is what I'm doing, so.
Well, twenty, it would be, we'd be looking at what, twenty-two, six?
Twenty-two, eight.
Eighty-eight.
Yeah, twenty-two, eight, roughly.
Twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars, yeah.
I was rounding.
That makes up for some overtime, the.
I'm not.
Wage loss that is already experienced.
Right.
Do we need to make a motion on this or kind of?
Well, we would have to move this to a decision item.
Four months.
Okay.
Because we can't make a decision now because we're in a discussion item.
Okay.
So does, do we, do we have a, at least a consensus to bring it to? Yes.
I would like to clarify, um, this council will increase me also bringing back that five, I meant to bring back the five percent that was taken away. Yeah.
Not yet.
It's just the one.
Yeah, we need to see that, that salary study.
And we're going, that's why we're going higher is to make up for the law, for the loss and.
Future.
Yes.
Can we ask for feedback from?
That's the ten. And there's another.
Yes, no, so I was, I wanted us to get done with this part and then we'll see what the chief says.
How do you feel with those numbers?
I, beyond any expectation that I have, but, um, please do not forget about my other employees.
No. Absolutely.
I'd rather you guys take care of them first, but I understand.
I knew you would say that.
Yeah.
Too bad.
But we have been kind of taking care of them because they get overtime. How much overtime do you get paid? How much overtime do you work?
Hold on.
Okay. Uh.
Yes, Wendy, just come on up and, and then say your piece. I just want to make sure that, because your voice doesn't carry like mic stuffs.
No problem. Pay the man. Yay. He gives time that you don't even know about.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, oh, I do.
But you're not there when we text him in the middle of the night because the equipment goes down or because we have a problem. Or he's taking all of the on-call because most of his staff comes from out of the city.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
And he doesn't get paid for that. Pay the man.
Yes.
Right, so we have an agreement to move this to a decision item.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we will move that into decision items.
Thank you.
And what's the number? Twenty percent of the.
Twenty, twenty-two thousand, six eighty-eight, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
We pay us a bonus.
And the bonus.
One bonus.
One-time bonus.
To get him through until we get this.
Well, we.
Until we get the salary study done and then we bring him to what it needs to be.
And everybody.
Everybody else.
Everybody else.
We have that salary study before negotiations.
Yes.
Oh.
Going into it.
Yeah.
I've already ordered the surveys. We'll have them very soon.
All right, but just, just answer me one question. Is there more than one person that does them now?
Um. It's probably, Philomena is really the, the best.
I, I know, but I meant, but you gotta remember. Well, no, you wouldn't remember. He's been the only one we can find, and Jim will tell you, for years. And so you had to do everything on his schedule.
Yeah, we're, we're getting their data from.
Okay, all right, good.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else on this item? As a discussion item. All right, hearing none, we'll move to decision items. I am adding this to the decision item and will now bring it up first. So consideration of bonuses, uh, bonus for the chief.
I move, are we discussing it or are we?
We are, if you want to go ahead and make a.
I'm just gonna move. I move to, um, approve a one-time bonus for Chief Pace of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Um. Payable immediately yesterday and, um. Yeah.
Just stick with immediate.
I'll second that.
Then moved by Tracy, seconded by Frank to award Police Chief Mike Pace a bonus of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars ASAP. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried unanimously.
I get two votes.
Thank you, my man.
It'll become one of your votes, it's a no vote.
Yeah, because it's your left hand.
The opposite.
I got you to think. All right, next up, ordinance number fourteen, twenty-four, and ordinance amending the Toledo. Comprehensive land use plan and zoning map.
Thank you.
Contract planner Ju, Justin Peterson, step on up.
Yeah.
Okay, let me get my proper stuff out here. All right, at this time, I will call the public hearing to order. At. At six thirty PM.
You can read, um, for, for both hearings if you want to say.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm calling for any declaration of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or a bias by any of the council for any of tonight's agenda items. And we are doing ordinance fourteen, twenty-four, and ordinance fourteen, twenty-five. Anyone?
That was the one that I. Anything tonight?
Yeah, well, the two tonight. We have, we have two ordinances we're doing.
Yeah.
A psilocybin in this one.
Yeah.
I thought we were approving a permit or, or no, this is what, one of them. Okay, yes, I need to declare ex parte communication. Um, I attended the last planning commission meeting, I believe it was, when this was presented. And I actually participated a little bit in the conversation with somebody sharing of ideas and I expressed some excitement about some of the ideas they were throwing out there for the property.
So it'll be in the minutes, correct?
Should be.
Okay.
For which one?
The planning commission for, uh, it was for fourteen, twenty-four. It might have been both.
I think that was a little on both.
It could have been. I never shut up.
Anyone else? Um.
Do, do you feel that you can be impartial?
I do.
Okay.
Um, I am, I don't have a conflict of interest, but I am aware of the situation regarding the land property at the Eagles. I've been spoken to by the owner, by the person who's renting the building, about their dreams for the site. But yes, I do believe I can be impartial.
I've heard rumors.
All right, anyone else?
I've spoken to her too. She showed me the building and what she wants to do with it, so.
But that's not what this is.
Okay, okay, yeah.
So. All right, all testimony received, all testimony or evidence presented toward this request being heard must be directed toward the relevant criteria contained in the Toledo Municipal Codes to other city plans or policies or to other criteria which a person believes pertains to the request. All persons shall raise issues with sufficient clarity so as to allow the, the city council or others an adequate opportunity to respond or to, to or resolve the issue. Failure to address a criterion before the close of the hearing record precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that criterion. Failure by the applicant no later than the close of the hearing record to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issues will preclude an action for damages based on those issues in the circuit court. Prior to the close of the evidentiary record of this hearing, a participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. If a participant requests such an opportunity prior to the close of the evidentiary record, then the. If a participant requests such an opportunity prior to the close of the evidentiary record, then the planning, then the city council. Will either continue the hearing for at least seven days or leave the record open for at least seven days to allow the submission of additional written evidence, arguments, or. Testimony. Right to appeal, an appeal from the action or ruling by the city council can be made to, in this case, Luba. Within fourteen days of the date of the city council's decision or ruling by filing a written notice and paying the appeal fee. The date of the, uh, city council's decision is the date the order is signed. If no appeal is taken within the fourteen-day period, the action or ruling of the city council shall be final. If an appeal is filed, the council shall receive a report and recommendation from the appropriate. City official and shall hold a public hearing. In order to have standing for an appeal, a person must have been mailed written notice or have participated in writing or in person. At the city council public hearing or have been substantially affected by the action or ruling. This is for all the public hearing items being presented on this agenda. All right, I will now open the public hearing. And the agenda items are. Ordinance fourteen, twenty-four, and ordinance amending the twenty-twenty-three Toledo Comprehensive Land Use Plan and Zoning Maps and ordinance number fourteen, twenty-five. And ordinance amending the Toledo Municipal Code Title Seventeen relating to the regulation of psilocybin services. And psilocybin manufacturing. Justin, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Pass. Um, so I'm gonna try and get through the, the staff reports relatively efficiently. I know it's a long, uh, long packet. Um, but kind of to set the framework of, of the first, the zone change application. And I think what would be helpful is on, so on page thirty-eight, there's a map of the tax lots, um, to take a look at. Um, so this, uh, the proposal is for the, the upper. Tax lots plus a portion of the Eagles Building, so tax lot seventy-eight hundred, seventy-nine hundred. Um, and, uh, eight, eighty-two hundred, um, the. Kind of to the west there, tax lot seventy-one hundred, seventy-two hundred, and seventy-four, one are actually. Already zoned commercial currently, so the Eagles Building as it's currently structured is split, split zone, so half, half the building. Um, is commercial, ru- roughly half, and then half of it is the residential general zone. Um, so the proposal here is to take. That east half of the Eagles Building tax lot, seventy-eight hundred plus the old parking lot area, um, seventy-nine hundred and eighty-two. Hundred and rezone those to commercial as well, so that it would be consistent for the entire. Um, ownership or, or property, since it is currently, um, s- split, split zone. Um, so again, proposal to change, change that zoning from, from RG, uh, residential general. To, to the commercial, um, zone, and as many of you know that, um, property has been historically used as the, the Eagles Building. But recently sold, um, a few years ago, go, and now it's being reused in a, the building portions being reused in a similar manner. As, uh, what was historically used as the, the Eagles Building. And then the upper parking lot currently is just, uh, vacant, uh, area at this, at this point. So jumping kind of through, um, the staff report, anything, um, I don't want to. Worry with too many of the details about the site, uh, facts, but, um. Uh, I want to get straight to page, so page. Twenty of the packets, so twenty of eighty-eight. It talks about the criteria for quasi-judicial map amendment, so this is. A quasi-judicial map amendment, because it was requested by, by the property owner to make, make the, the change. Um, so there's three specific criteria, so demonstration of compliance with all applicable comp plan policies and map designations. Where this criteria, empty map and comp plan amendment shall be pre-represented, so this, um. Proposal is actually a zone change and a comp, it's a plan map, um, change, so you have the zoning map. And then a, a comp plan map, there are cases where they are, are not the same, and Toledo's case, pretty much across the board, our zoning map matches our. Uh, demonstration of compliance with applicable standards and criteria of this code and other, uh, applicable implementing ordinances. And I'll kind of get into that a little bit more in the findings. Um, evidence of a change in the neighborhood or a community, uh, or a mistake or inconsistency in the comp plan or land use maps. Regarding the property which, uh, the, the subject application is for, so I'll get into that a little bit more as I go through the findings. On the next couple pages, you'll kind of see a list of the, uh, commercial allowed and conditional uses and then the residential. Commercial, it allowed resident, uh, earth. Allowed and then conditional use, um, options, so just to get a, a feel for what it's moving from, um, and, and, and to. On the general residential, and I've cited, um, some different, uh, comprehensive plan goals, so there's citizen involvement, economic development. And housing, and I'll get in to some details on that, the housing side specifically with our, our findings, um. And then, uh, I would, I do want to note that we received, which is included in the packet, we did receive some, some comments. Um, from, from Laura, um, representing an adjacent property owner. Um, we added some additional findings within the staff report in this. The, the comments were provided after the planning commission staff report, but before the planning commission meeting, so the planning commission did, did have these comments during. Uh, their, their hearing.
Both pages of those comments on Justin?
Um, so those comments are on page. Comments are on page fifty-one and fifty-two and fifty-three. And so in the proposed fact and findings, I'm gonna highlight some kind of key, key areas and definitely can answer some questions. Uh, afterwards, um, so on page twenty-seven, uh, finding number four. I, uh, I covered A pretty well, um, but for criteria B, um, this will be complied with. Um, as the applicant has requested a change in the comp plan map and has proposed a change to a de- uh, to the designation that's. Going to in basically in conjunction and in compliance of both changing, both the comp plan and zone. Change from residential to, to commercial at the same, same time. Um, and then I, and then in criteria C, um, the, so the property. Has historically been used as the Eagles Building, which was commercial in nature and actually built prior to the adoption of the zoning. Uh, map, so, uh, in, there, there is, the. Finding is that there's an inconsistency in the comp plan and land use maps, uh, when, when it was created, so that. It should have been zoned commercial back in the seventies when our, uh, zoning map and comp plan map was.
It's been used that way ever since, right?
Yeah. And since, been used as the Eagles Building ever since a few years ago, and then, uh, we do staff when the. Um, so the owner has, um, a tenant that's operating in the Eagles Building currently. And they, um, received a non-conforming use determination, so that they could continue the use. As a similar use as what the Eagles Building, so, uh, essentially a, a bar and restaurant. Um. And I'm moving through the findings, um, kind of, one thing I want to note is, I didn't say the su- approximate size of the lots. But about point-six acres, and then the upper lots are about point-four, so the parking, parking lot areas, and I'll have to split those out. And as I talk about some of the findings, um, later. And so I think finding ten here is important, uh, because what we need to do is look at our current residential housing stock. Because we are changing from residential to commercial. So the city does now have a recent buildable lands inventory, um, and housing capacity analysis done in twenty-twenty-two. Um, basically since that, uh, analysis occurred, there's been about nine permits in the city. And then there are also some demolition permits, so minimal additional, uh, loss of residential land in those few years. Um, and basically, uh, those findings out of that buildable lands inventory show that we have a surplus. Um, in general, and our single-family residential zoning, so that. Removing this small amount of acreage, really only the point-four acres, because the bottom half is, um. Commercial in nature in the Eagles Building, you're, we're not losing a significant amount of re- buildable residential land. And. One note, so that obviously the Eagles Building is connected to sewer and water, but that upper lot would, if there is potential additional development. Would have to connect into, to sewer and water, those, uh, it, it has frontage on Second and Butler. Likely whatever access for that parking lot would be onto Second Street, um, on our. The Transportation System Plan or TSP, and those are both local, local roads. One of the concerns that was brought up in the comments are related to the, the traffic. Um, and then I think other major concern was related to the finding about inconsistency in the, the neighborhood in terms of, um. The, the use, and I think we've addressed the inconsistency with kind of what the historic use of the property was. Um, and one other note, kind of, that's, there's, there's a zoning map that's in the packet. Um. Page here in a second, but basically what that zoning map shows is that there's, we're not creating what? Forty-eight, forty-eight, perfect, or forty, forty-seven, uh. Uh, it, it shows that you have commercial adjacent to residential already, so we're not creating a spot zoning here, the commercial zoning would be. Continued from basically Main Street down, um, and then you would move to residential, so it's not uncommon to have commercial next to residential. What is kind of uncommon would be to create one single parcel in the middle of a bunch of residential. Um, to address kind of some of the, the comments related to the, uh. The change of use and then the traffic, we did, oh, you'll kind of see that in finding seventeen where we. Talked through an example of what a potential use could be on the, the property, so right now, as it's currently zoned, it could be a. Multi-family residential, so we do an estimate of trip count, um, based on our, um. Based on our Public Works manual, and then looking at it, that upper lot is relatively small and you have, with parking. Requirements and landscaping and other kind of just site requirements. Uh, you'd have a limited build area and that would be limit, so we did kind of a clinic. If a clinic was put in, it would be roughly a hundred and twenty-eight trips as an example, not a significant, um, bump. Um, I'm not sure if the applicants here today, but they, during the planning commission meeting, they gave a little bit of idea of what. They were potentially going to put on the site, and they're looking at kind of like a cluster housing is what they, they described potentially on the. Lot, uh, ultimately, the zoning would be commercial, so it, anything in that listed commercial uses would be open to move forward. But, um, but what was mentioned during the meeting was, um, the cluster housing. And I can, that's kind of overview, and I can definitely. Answer general questions in terms of clarifying items first, but then, uh, and I can, after there's any public comment to. Address and answer any questions. But if there's nothing that's clarifying, we can move to public comment.
Um, so the. The one thing I, I want to make clear that. They were discussing the, uh, traffic count. And if you've lived here, the traffic count, when the Eagles was up and running full door all the time. Was a lot more than a hundred and twenty-eight. So historically speaking, there's been more traffic there and it handled very, very well. Parking spots are there, you know, every, everything is there to accommodate that extra use, as it were. So, let's see.
You've got your problems back in the day, why would it cause problems back?
Well, exactly. All right.
Just asking.
Um, any questions on the staff report? All right. Applicant testimony, is there anyone, uh, of the applicant online to present any testimony?
Eric wasn't online earlier, he was at the planning commission meeting.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this change? Whether in the audience or online? Right, hearing none, anyone who is opposed to this change, either online or in the audience?
Any hands are raised.
Right, any other interested parties would like to address this possible change? Right, hearing none, since we've had no other testimony, we, there's no need for rebuttal by applicant. All right, questions by the council, any questions on what's been presented here? All right, at this time, I will close the public hearing at. Six fifty? Hey, we can now, yes.
Yeah, you do psilocybin too, right?
Yeah, because.
Yeah.
The public hearing for both.
Yeah, you open the public hearing for.
Okay, so, all right, so then now, Justin, will you give us the, pardon me, I'll reopen the public hearing, I'm sorry, that was my mistake.
You're good, it was confusing.
Yeah, I hear you. All right, um. So can you go ahead on, like, Mike, do you have the one on psilocybin or just Justin?
Justin.
Justin, fire away.
Fourteen, twenty-five.
Yeah, fourteen, twenty-five.
Together.
Yeah, we'll do them together, we'll just take the billion mo- the billion motions at once.
Um, and I'll be, I can be quicker with the psilocybin, um, ordinance, um, it's, it's probably cleaner if we. Do them one at a time.
Okay, so, what do you think, Justin?
Yeah, if I, it would be cleaner.
All right, so I will close the public hearing. There, we'll move back along, that was at six fifty-one. All right, deliberations, any comment? Hey, I would, uh, point anyone who wants to make motions, they are on page seventeen of the packet. Also, motion one and motion two, I am ready to accept either one. I will, I will tell you that here's my part of the deliberation side of this. I am really happy that we are moving on this because it's been a while. Um, I'm glad to see some growth in that area of town. I think that this zone change makes so much perfect sense because it's been a commercial use forever. So why?
Well, that was my thought, yeah.
There's, it's historically a commercial use and historically has had much higher traffic counts. So I, I believe that those, uh, objections are not valid.
We're just fixing an oops, I don't, we're just ripping something.
So what motion are we going with, one or two?
No.
One, then two.
You go one and then two, and then.
And then second motion.
And then the, and then the next motion, so we do one first.
Okay. Make motion number one, public hearing based on staff reports and attachments, testimony and evidence presented to the city council. At the public hearing on December fourth, twenty-twenty-four, and the planning commission recommendation that Toledo City Council approves the comprehensive plan. And amendment and rezone requests, parentheses, RZ dash one dash two four. And PA dash one dash two four, and parentheses, as meeting the applicable criteria including the twenty-twenty-three. Toledo Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Toledo Municipal Code, Section seventeen dot eight zero dot zero five zero. And the statewide planning goals and the commission adopts the proposed facts and findings presented in the staff report, allowing for correction as typographical errors. And grammatical errors.
A second.
Pardon me, it's been moved by Frank, seconded by Kim. That based on the staff report and attachments, testimony and evidence presented to the city council at the public hearing on December fourth, twenty-twenty-four. And the planning commission recommendation, the Toledo City Council approves the comprehensive plan amendment and rezone request. Open parents, RZ dash one dash two four and PA dash one dash two four, closed parents. As meeting the applicable criteria including the twenty-twenty-three Toledo Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Toledo Municipal Code, Section one, seven. Point eight zero point zero five zero, and the statewide planning. And the statewide planning goals and the council adopts proposed facts and findings presented in the staff report. Allowing for the correctional typographical and grammatical errors. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries six zero.
Now I read the second one?
There you go, if you want to make that motion.
Motion number two, propose ordinance decision item, I move to adopt ordinance number fourteen twenty four by reading the title only twice. An ordinance of the Toledo City Council amending the twenty twenty three Toledo Comprehensive Land Use Plan and zoning maps as adopted by ordinance number. Fourteen seventeen, I read again, right?
Yep.
An ordinance of the Toledo City Council amending the twenty twenty three Toledo Comprehensive Land Use Plan and zoning maps as adopted. By ordinance number fourteen seventeen.
A second.
Been moved by Frank, seconded by Kim. I move to uh to adopt, motion to adopt ordinance number fourteen twenty four by reading title only. Twice, an ordinance of Toledo City Council amending the twenty twenty three Toledo comprehen- comprehensive land use plan and zoning maps as adopted. By ordinance number fourteen seventeen. In ordinance of Toledo City Council amending the twenty twenty three Toledo Comprehensive Land Use Plan and zoning maps as adopted by ordinance number. Fourteen seventeen, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries six zero.
The reading twice. Okay.
Or or they make you read the entire ordinance.
Oh, shoot me now. You've got that one.
Go with the title twice.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you. Well, I don't know, Rock could read the whole word.
Don't want him to sleep tonight, oh, I mean, we could go to sleep here, but. Have to be working.
Alright.
More in the morning.
I need to go back and do this as a roll call vote according to this, is that true, Mike, or can we do it the way I just did it?
Yeah, I think you probably, I think you probably uh.
Well, all I'm I'm not gonna read it again, I'm just gonna say on motion number one. I'll take a roll call vote and then on motion number two, I'll take a roll call vote, okay? Alright, motion number one, roll call vote, councillor Mix. Councillor Kaufman.
Yes.
Councillor Sylvia.
Yes.
Councillor Burns.
Yes.
Councillor President Bush.
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes, carries six zero. Motion number two, councillor Mix. Councillor Kaufman.
Yes.
Councillor Sylvia. Councillor Burns.
Yes.
Councillor President Bush.
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes. Carries six zero. There, I will do it properly the next time.
Said it couldn't be that.
Alright. Next up, we will open the public hearing on ordinance number fourteen twenty five. An ordinance amending the Toledo Municipal Code Title seventeen relating to the regulation of psilocybin services. And psilocybin manufacturing. And we have, I'm asking for declarations of conflict of interest, exporte contact or bias by commissioners for any intent on any. Or anything on this item. Councillors, I'm sorry.
Exporte contact. I showed up at the planning commission meeting and participated in something that I do not feel there's a conflict of interest and I can be unbiased. Can I get it all, Mike?
Yep.
Oh, stray me.
Anyone? Alright. Statements of rights and relevance, all testimony or evidence presented toward the request being heard must be directed toward the relevant criteria. Contained in Toledo Municipal Codes. To other city plans or policies or to other criteria in which a person believes pertains to the request. All persons shall raise issue with sufficient clarity so as to allow the planning committee, the. City council or others an adequate opportunity to respond to or resolve the issue.
Mayor, you've read all this once, I think you're good.
You've assured.
Because initially you opened it with both.
Okay, I just, you know, I don't want to. We're good. Okay, thank God. Alright, staff report.
Alright, thank, thank you, Mayor. Save me a little time. So uh I'm just gonna start with a little kind of history of why and then get into kind of our. Or the ordinance proposal, um and then um kind of one question that will be. Uh was brought by planning commission, that's the council, we'll have to deliberate and discuss on. Uh but kind of history, so this all comes from a ballot measure, one oh one oh nine in Oregon, um that was passed. Um and then uh the city of Toledo um in in um. Two thousand twenty two opted, went through the voter and initiative process to opt out. For a period of time, that opt out period ends um at the end of this this year, so um. Since the city did not um uh opt out again, uh there's a ability to adopt. Time, place and manner restrictions is what they're often referred to, so like the look potential location. Um of of psilocybin facilities. Uh how very similar to uh when the city had to adopt similar standards for for marijuana facilities. Um so beginning, been beginning in January one, twenty twenty five, um that's kind of when. When uh O H A, Oregon Health Authority can start accepting applications for within uh this the city of Toledo city limits. Right now, we don't have any applications or haven't talked to to anyone about opening a facility. Uh but as of that date in January, technically someone could come in and have a proposal to open, open a facility. How um? And the one specific standard um that was, and I'll come back to this in some more detail. Um but one of the criteria that we have uh had proposed was a thousand feet between facilities. Um that based on review of the time, place and manner regulations, that could be reduced or removed. If it was, but it's up to council in terms of a decision to keep.
What does that mean?
So the.
It can't be closer together than that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank, thank you for.
Property line to property.
Good.
Yeah, thank you for adding that clarifying.
So are you saying we could remove that thousand feet restriction?
Yeah.
Remove any distance restrictions, so we could. Decide that no, we're not gonna.
Fire it, remove the.
You you could not make it more than a thousand feet though, right, because the statute does limit.
And we originally those and when I get to those standards, it was very similar to the marijuana facilities in terms of adoption. The thousand foot from schools, that's in statute and has to stay. The thousand feet between facilities, so property line to property line, um that could could be reduced. Or or removed, it's it's optional. Right, that's. And.
So except for retail or is that a horror producing?
So it'd be how it 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 encapsures.
All of it.
Yeah. Um and I I'm not going to read out each, but uh we have new definitions and these are pretty much copied. From the state statute standards, so we have psilocybin product, psilocybin product manufacturer. Um so that would be actually the manufacturing and then there's psilocybin service center, so that's where um you would. Have the professional, the licensed um individual with O H A's um. Where they would have the products there. So how we've structured it is in the commercial zone um as a conditional. So this is under the conditional use permit, so that means it would have to come, if someone did propose this, it would have to come back to planning commission for. For approval through a conditional use pro- process, but psilocybin service center, so this. Uh very similar to a marijuana retail, it's in there as a a conditional use and that's just the service center. So. In the light, in our light industrial zone, um which often you have more intense like manufacturing um facilities. Same conditional use, but it would potentially a service center or a product manufacturer. Or they could co-opate potentially in the light industrial zone. And then our home, under our home occupation standards, it makes it clear that it would not be allowed as a home occupation, so that's. Home occupation, they're typically in your residential zones like um. A small office where you might have very minimal traffic typically, uh but that's not the type of use that you. Typically want in the as a home occupation, so we make it clear um in the code. And then there's our conditional use standards, so there'd be a new section specifically for psilocybin. Um service centers and product manufacturers, so this makes it clear that it not abutting either of our residential. Um zones or Lincoln County's residential zones. And and then makes it clear about the service center being operated in conjunction with the manufacturer potentially. A thousand feet from schools, that's copied from statute um. Uh and then the limit on the size of the facility and then subsection F, that's kind of where the question comes into play. About the distance between facilities, there's the drive through facilities being prohibited. And then uh basically keeping everything inside in terms of storage is the um subsection H. And then in compliance with state and federal law is the. The last subsection, these very, we structured it very similar to the marijuana facilities, so um. Uh that's kind of why, how we decided as staff to. To propose the the standards, so it makes it um easier to to understand. Uh but after the planning commission meeting and the comments at that meeting, the one standard that. Uh we researched and that could be changed was that thousand foot between that I mentioned. There's there's specific criteria that are not gonna go into too much detail, we didn't get any um. Comments on, we had some calls that Arlene received and they were general questions, but no official comments were submitted. Um we didn't get any comments from the county and then we've kind of listed. Criteria four talks about the com- plan policies and provisions. Um so we've listed kind of how this would be in compliance with those com- plan policies and a one. Fabiot is it's kind of it's come out of a state law and now that we're we're adopting it, um but by having. By having that conditional use option, things like land use, transportation. Um can all be reviewed again during the conditional use process if there is potential impacts um. But that's the staff report um. Or. This psilocybin ordinance.
Alright. Is there any applicant testimony? Hearing none, is there any proponent testimony, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance? Okay, you need to state your name and address for the record.
Oh, it's a mix four four three Southeast seventh street, we know. Um. So I'm for this, I also, I thought I'm a commissioner and I thought about this after the meeting. And the but the budding the residential, I don't know if that could be changed, but because we're so limited on commercial. And light industrial, it doesn't really make sense to have that in there because it's probably gonna but residential, so. I would ask to have that removed and then I'm also in favor of uh having that thousand foot. Uh distance between facilities because we're limited on commercial but industrial space.
Okay, thank you. Is there any opponent testimony, anyone who was weak who wishes to speak against this? Topic. Alright. Any other interested parties would like to speak to this topic? Alright, hearing none. Uh any rebuttal by the city to the comments? Hearing none. Alright, questions by the council?
I'm a full supporter of this. I know it helps, then a lot of veterans that use this across the country. I am, on the other hand, I'm, I don't think we need to get rid of that thousand foot or thing personally, um it just. First of all. I know what it takes to get one of these things started up and it's not easy. It's not easy, it's not cheap. The likelihood of us having multiples pop up, I don't even think we'll get one popped up, but I think that thousand feet, yeah, I mean, I respect Jonathan's comments. But I think that thousand feet needs to stay. That's just my humble opinion.
I think we're, there might be some confusion if you haven't read much about. Way Oregon passed this psilocybin thing is, you know, we're setting it up the same way we did. Or dispensaries for marijuana, but it it the way the law is right now, no one can open up a retail establishment. And sell mushrooms, you can only do it in a certified therapeutic setting.
Correct.
And so we're not ever going, uh unless the law changes, we're never gonna have a dispensary for mushrooms. Um and. Like you were saying councillor Silva, um Sylvia?
Sylvia.
Sylvia. Um. That um it's ungodly expensive to get certified to be a therapist and. And turn there having to charge such high prices to people for the therapy that only the ultra wealthy can afford this therapy. So Toledo is never going to get somebody here unless something miraculous happens. And I know we probably have veterans and a lot of people who could use it. But um the way it's set up right now, it's so prohibitive that. The only thing I can see coming in is maybe people growing it and it would be, I'm assuming inside. Dark. Grow houses, you know, that are secure, um so you know, that would be the only way I I I can see it coming to Toledo ever.
Psilocybin still grow in the dark.
But I don't know. Remember kids kicking over cow patties together.
They use mega thousand dollar lights to run these same huge vent hoods and everything, the guy I know over in Colorado that does this for companies over there. His building has probably a hundred different types of lights in it alone, it's it's ungodly expensive. But it's one that's definitely.
Why was this delayed uh to come up and expire at the end of this, I I'm not understanding. Was that something we did?
Cause two years ago, we we essentially kicked the can down the road till now. Because at that time, the state still had not set the rules. Surrounding it, so.
The Oregon administrative rules that they promulgate based on the statute.
Right.
And so the statute allowed you to opt out in a general election.
Right.
And in any general election and. We did a two year moratorium, opted out, put it before the voters, they approved it. This came back before council and you opted to. You know, we looked at three or four different options and you opted to allow it to go into place and. And the, you know, it's in uh O R S chapter four seventy five A and the administrative rules regulate everything you can think of. It it's highly regulated and.
Okay. And it wasn't two years ago.
And 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 so the option was to come back and and let the, you know, do the land use location.
So if our present facts change and say something changes. And suddenly we can now have, um now it's affordable.
And you can have a dispensary.
And we, well, maybe not such a dispenser, or maybe it's just affordable for normal people and.
Maybe insurance started covering it.
Right.
Or the federal government started covering it.
So so.
Maybe one of them therapists wants to part like retire in Toledo.
So not so much that, but my question is, it's the fact change, say we we vote to pass this as a. And the facts change and we see a need to remove that thousand dollar dis- or thousand foot distance barrier, we can we do that later?
Yes.
Yes, so it's like a living document.
And how difficult, and that's not like a vote that has to happen, we can do that.
You would have to.
It would have to go through the process.
You'd have to go through the ordinance process.
Have to go through the ordinance process, but it's not something that's undoable, you know, that's never gonna change. Um.
It would be good to have the groundwork, but yeah.
Well, I was gonna answer your question in my comments, but um so it's been questioned, been answered on how we got here. So that people would understand.
Where do people get it now?
Um there are, I think there are two, there are two, well, I think there's only three in Portland, I think that's it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because it's thousands and thousands of dollars to get.
For a session.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just one session.
Just one session. Just one session and to get certified. To meet the therapist is thousands of dollars.
Could just mark or do some psilocybin.
And I've heard that it doesn't go the way they initially said it was going to, when the whole psilocybin thing came out. They presented it like they were there doing it in here, they presented it that you would go in, you'd be with a psychiatrist, you'd be going through a session. And they made it sound like this is gonna be a little, they'll be able to help people discern the difference between fiction and reality, so if you have people. That are having PTSD flashbacks or there's somebody that just really has a mental illness that they can't def- find define the difference between reality, like. What they saw on TV and what really happened and the whole thing was a psychiatrist was gonna be trained to work with this and help them go through their trip and help them. Le- learn and 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 they've had great results in Europe. Wonderful, I've seen the studies coming out of it, it's amazing, but they're not doing that here, they give it to you, they have a nurse on hand in case something goes wrong, you're not getting any therapy. Because it's not required in the statutes.
Yep.
Ethan.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right. Close the public hearing at seven fifteen. We will now deliberate. Um. If you wish to make a motion, uh it is found on page fifty nine of your packet.
Fifty eight.
Mine says fifteen.
Mine's fifty nine.
Mine's fifteen.
Is it the highlighted?
Okay, so no, so you you do the, okay, so read through the top sentence and then you start with the I make a motion.
Oh goodness, okay.
Stop smiling, Mayor Chambers.
So we can make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the Toledo municipal code based on the testimony received. The findings within the staff report, finding permission recommendation and evidence and arguments. Before the city council at the public hearing on December fourth, twenty twenty four, do I read all of it?
Yep.
If the city council determines that the request by the city of Toledo, Z O A dash one dash twenty four. To amend sections seventeen point oh four point oh two zero. Seventeen point sixteen point zero three zero, seventeen point twenty point. Zero three zero, seventeen point four six point zero eight zero, seventeen point sixty four point zero five zero. And create subsection five of seventeen point sixty four point zero five zero. Zero parentheses B parentheses of the Toledo municipal code. Complies with the criteria identified in T M C nineteen point two zero. Point zero seven zero, I'm losing track, man. 括号A,括号dash,括号D,括号as stated. And the findings contained in the staff report, the city council hereby adopts the staff report. As findings and the other evidence in the record as findings, supporting its decision and approves application Z O A dash one dash two four. In addition, the city council adopts ordinance number fourteen twenty five, reading by title. Only, it doesn't say twice only.
It does envelope, yeah.
Okay.
And that'll be your second motion.
So I make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the Toledo municipal code based on the testimony received. Oh, no, you know, the what below it, I'm sorry, guys.
That's okay.
Okay.
I'm telling you, I'm losing track, okay. An ordinance of the Toledo City Council amending the Toledo Municipal Code, title seventeen, subsection seventeen point zero four. Point zero two zero, seventeen point sixteen point zero three zero, seventeen point twenty. Point zero three zero, seventeen point forty six point zero eight zero, seventeen point sixty four point zero five zero. And creating subsections five of seventeen point sixty four point zero five zero, parentheses B parentheses. Relating to the regulation of psilocybin services and psilocybin manufacturing. An ordinance of the Toledo City Council amending the Toledo Municipal Code, title seventeen, section seventeen point zero four. Point zero two zero, seventeen point sixteen point zero three zero, seventeen point two zero. Point zero three zero, seventeen point four six zero eight zero, seventeen point six. Four point zero five zero and creating subsection five of seventeen point six four. Point zero five zero parentheses B parentheses relating to the regulation of psilocybin services. And psilocybin manufacturing.
We have a second, second.
Yeah.
Did I do something wrong?
No.
Not reading it again.
Carry on.
It's been moved by Kim, seconded by Frank. To approve the proposed amendment to Lito- to the Toledo Municipal Code based on testimony received, the finding within the staff report. Finding commission recommendation and the evidence and arguments before the city council at the public hearing on December fourth, twenty twenty four. The city council determines that the request by the city of Toledo, open parents. Z O A dash one dash two four, close parents to amend sections. One seven point zero four point zero two zero, one seven point one six point zero three zero. One seven point two zero point zero three zero, one seven four six point zero eight zero. One seven six four point zero five zero and create subsection five. Of one seven point six four point zero five zero parenthetical B of the Toledo Municipal Code. Complies with criteria identified in T M C nineteen point zero point two zero point zero seven zero. Parenthetical A through parenthetical D as stated in the findings contained in the staff report. The city council hereby adopts the staff report as findings and the other evidence in the record as findings supporting its decision. And approves applications, application Z O A dash one dash four. In addition, the city council adopts ordinance number fourteen twenty five, reading by title only. An ordinance of the Toledo City Council amending the Toledo Municipal Code, title seventeen, sections one seven. Point zero four point zero two zero. Uh one seven point one six point zero three zero, one seven point two zero zero three zero. One seven point four six zero eight zero, one seven six four point zero five zero. And creating subsection five of one seven point six four point zero five zero parenthetical B. Relating to the regulation of psilocybin services and psilocybin, pardon me. Manufacturing. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Mix.
Yes.
Counselor Kaufman.
Yes.
Counselor Sylvia.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counsel President Bush.
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion carries six zero. Next, I will entertain another motion here.
What?
Gotta have a second motion to adopt by reading the title multiple times.
I thought we did it at the same time.
No.
I move. Well, you let her read it, so I move.
I did.
To um adopt ordinance number fourteen twenty five, an ordinance of the Toledo City Council amending the Toledo Municipal Code, title seventeen. Section seventeen point oh four point oh two oh. Seventeen point one six point oh three oh, seventeen point two zero point oh three oh, seventeen point four six point oh eight oh, seventeen point six four point oh five oh. And creating subsection five of seventeen point six four point oh five oh, parenthetical B relating to the regulation of phyl- psilocybin services and psilocybin manufacturing. An ordinance of the Toledo City Council amending the Toledo Municipal Code, let me see how fast I can read this. Title seventeen, sections of seventeen point oh four oh two oh, seventeen one six oh three oh, seventeen two oh. Point oh three oh, seventeen four six point oh eight oh, seventeen point six four point oh five oh. And creating subsection five of seventeen point six four point oh five oh, sub- or parenthetical B relating to the regulation of psilocybin. Services and psilocybin manufacturing.
Second.
We have big ones like that, we have for real.
Yeah.
All right.
You did great.
Moved to adopt, it's been moved by a second by Tracy, seconded by Jackie. To adopt ordinance number fourteen twenty five. An ordinance of the Toledo City Council amending the Toledo Municipal Code, title seventeen, sections one seven point zero four point zero two zero. One seven point one six point zero three zero, one seven point two zero point zero three zero. One seven point four six point zero eight zero, one seven point six four point zero five zero. And creating subsection five of one seven point six four point zero five zero parenthetical B. Relating to the regulation of psilocybin services and psilocybin manufacturing. We are to read this twice, an ordinance of the Toledo City Council amending the Toledo Municipal Code. Once, the title seventeen, sections one seven point zero fours. One seven point zero four point zero two zero, one seven point one six point zero three zero. One seven point two zero point zero three zero, one seven point four six point zero eight zero, one seven six four point zero five zero. And creating subsection five of one seven point six four point zero five zero parenthetical B. Relating to the regulation of psilocybin services and psilocybin manufacturing. I'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Mix.
Yes.
Counselor Kaufman.
Yes.
Counselor Sylvia.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counsel President Bush.
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion carries six zero. Next item, certification of the November fifth, by the way, thank you, Justin.
Thank you. Thanks, Justin.
Certification of the the November fifth, twenty twenty four general election results. I do have one question before we get into this, Lisa, is why wasn't the certification page included in the packet?
It wasn't ready.
Because it wasn't ready at the time, I do have it now, so I will flash it up on the screen.
Thank you.
It says right there, at the time of procuring it, it wasn't ready.
But I know her.
Somebody did.
She would have, you know, she would have slid it back in there, that's my point, she does this.
She's trixy, you're spoiled.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, so your packet is the council report just noting that. At the November fifth general election, um. The voters elected a mayor to serve two year term and three counselors to serve four year terms. Um as well as a ballot measure to consider whether or not to amend the city charter. And at the time that the council report was made, I had not yet received the results. But I am sharing them up on the screen for your viewing and for anyone in the audience.
Can anyone read that?
Did they not send out a list of all this, just already, for lack of a better word? The, because normally we get a sheet that says blah, blah, blah for everything, not. Not us having to bring everything up.
Yeah, they have not even like sent it out in the mail yet.
Okay, okay, thank, that's what I was getting at Frank, is that she'll do this, but usually she, they've sent the stuff and she can just throw it into the packet.
Oh, okay, I gotcha.
So can we wait until that arrives?
No.
No, this is.
No, we have to certify the results within a certain amount of time.
Yep.
Eh.
So, yeah, uh. So, um. What was elected?
Our house, this thing is like.
Excuse me, targets, zooming in way more than I needed to.
It's okay.
I'm impressed with how many people voted because at midterm.
Well, general elections, especially presidential just elections generally have a much greater turnout than the other elections. Even a, even a general election in two years.
Yeah.
Which would be the governor.
Uh, and. And then for counselors, we have Tracy Mix, Jackie Kaufman and council elect Andrew Keating. And then um the ballot measure passed.
What was their final number? By, on my.
Two votes.
That would have, that would have triggered, definitely would have triggered a recount.
Uh, just a few.
It was close, it was like twenty eight.
Twenty five or twenty eight, I can't, I couldn't remember, that's why I'm asking, it was close, yeah.
I'm making major math, I can't.
Make Tracy do it, she likes math.
I can't read it that far.
Seven eighty three over seven fifty eight, is that twenty five?
That's twenty five.
Okay.
Okay.
And so I'm just seeking a motion for you to accept.
Move to accept the um the election results from the November fifth, twenty twenty four general election.
I said, yeah.
It's been moved by Tracy, seconded by Kim to accept the certified results of the November fifth, twenty twenty four general election. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, carry six zero. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Next item, resolution number fifteen sixty four, resolution recognizing grant revenue and making appropriations in fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. For the library department.
Can we just do a motion?
Where's Harrison online?
Is he?
I don't believe so, I, he's not all present.
It seems pretty.
Yeah.
These are just budget appropriations, so.
And yes, to answer your question, you can just make.
So I move to adopt resolution number fifteen sixty four, resolution of the Toledo City Council to recognize grant revenue. And make appropriations for spending in the fiscal year twenty 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 four, twenty twenty five, I second it.
Been moved by Tracy, seconded by Kim. To adopt resolution number fifteen sixty four, resolution of Toledo City Council to recognize grant revenue. And make appropriations for spending in fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries six zero. Next item, resolution number fifteen sixty five. Recognizing a resolution, recognizing grant revenue and making appropriations for. Spending in fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five for the fire department.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number fifteen five, a resolution. But the Toledo City Council to recognize grant revenue and make appropriations for spending in fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. I'll second that.
It's been moved by Jackie, seconded by Tracy. To adopt resolution number fifteen sixty five, a resolution of Toledo City Council to recognize grant revenue and make appropriations. Spending in fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, all opposed, same sign. I know you were, I know, I know what you were distracted by, motion carries six zero.
Grants came from.
Georgia Pacifics, and someone's gonna comment about that in in mayor comments.
I will happily give you my sheets that show you where they were came from. Yeah.
It's all right.
Oh, you're not interested anymore?
Okay, reports and reports and comments, I'll start with Lisa.
The only announcement I have is coming up on January fifteenth, we will have our. Oregon Government Ethics Commission training up at the fire department.
What was that date again?
January fifteenth.
January.
Yes, it's the second, it's the.
Will you send a calendar invite?
What time is it supposed to be?
It's an all day training. I believe it should start.
I'm gonna be late.
I may not.
Therapy that day.
I have to check my calendar for teaching.
And it starts at what, like eight in the morning?
Eightish, nineish.
September thirteenth, right?
It's not yet up on their website as far as.
What day?
January fifteenth.
January.
January.
It's the second. What's that, third Wednesday?
January fifteenth.
That's the only next one I have.
All right, I'm already on for ethics training.
The what? Merry Christmas party.
I already have.
That's December thirteenth.
My daughter is supposed to be here, so we stood her up last year and we didn't already do that this year.
Thank you.
The mayor is allergic to me, I can't handle.
Do you not have a Christmas party? We do have a Christmas party, yeah.
No, we don't like each other enough.
All right. Let's see, is Harrison online?
No.
Is. Brian online?
No.
Is Ryan online?
Yeah.
Chief Pace, you're the lucky winner.
Yay, uh first of all, thank you very much for.
Uh, first of all, thank you very much for. Please again, take care of my employees. They work very, very hard and.
Thank you for being the gorilla tape of the police department.
I'm glad you had a voice tape.
Yeah, gorilla tape.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm very passionate about that department. Yeah, and so this kind of goes into the next thing I want to talk about would be, uh, Gary Sumter from Oral Sign. Uh, it's him, next week on Tuesday. Reason why we did it at noon is because the family is coming from a long distance and I didn't want them driving. So, um, the itinerary, the. And the itinerary hasn't really been set up yet, so if any of you can make it and would like to speak, please let me know. If I could speak on the. Um, of what, um. And then I'm gonna be inviting the visitors from the other departments and. Stay in the house and everybody else wants to go attend.
Nice.
The family will be there. The sign is right there. So that will be posted up. But we'll also.
Lean up against the wall, yeah.
We will also have little pens and change that are an exact replica of the sign itself. So, uh, we are presenting the family with a shadow box that has a folded flag and some other things in, in the. Shadow box to include a personalized badge for him.
And love that.
I will be given a whole rendition of what exactly happened that day. As well as reading, uh, Chief Novak's eulogy for, um, that, that night. Or for his funeral. Since he was a reserve officer, he did not get any benefits from the state or from the federal government. Um, and there was some. Political issues there as a result of. A suspect, and so the family left the town soon after that happened. Uh, I do believe he's buried here in Newport and, and.
And the community pulled together and paid for the funeral, right?
They did, they did a fund for it, the community did. And that was, um, the, the mayor at the time, I can't remember his name. And the chief were very adamant and making sure that all of you about this fund. For him was done, so the community did come together and give them funds. So that helped the family a lot.
Way before GoFundMe. Yeah, but it was, it was pre-GoFundMe. That's cool.
Exact, and so, uh, I've been in touch with Julie Sumter who is the, um, Gary's daughter. And so she'll be there with her family and stuff, so they're really excited about the city being, recognizing their father. I was hoping to have. I ordered a long time ago, the, um. The Purple Heart for him, but it will not be there in time, so we'll have to do that another time. Possibly we can re-invite the family over during the city council and present it at that point in time.
Could we have a plaque that that put on his headstone if we can figure out where he was buried?
That's a really good idea.
Yeah, like a permanent. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. We're gonna make sure, there used to be something in the police department, but nobody could find it.
Only need to make another one then.
We are making another one.
Good.
So we are going to, we've made two of those badges, these personalized badges, and we'll have that in his picture. You guys have the flyers. I just posted on Facebook. She just posted it on the city webpage. And the public will be able to view it, um, both live and reported through the same. So people that can't make it will be able to make it another time, so. Pretty excited about that. Officer Don will be graduating from the academy on Fridays. It will be, you'll see him on the streets next week. We do have an officer that is in backgrounds right now for Newport. So if that person may as well be down to three officers. So until gone gets released, but then we'll have another officer going on, turn immediately in February. So we'll be down. Yeah, we're, um, until probably March, and so, uh, please. Keep them in mind as we're all gonna be stressed out trying to work a lot of hours covering the city, so, um. Yeah, I think that's all we want to say right now.
Can we also find out? Where he's buried? If he's local, we need to have flowers on the grave before the family gets here. That way when they come and visit the grave, which I'm sure.
I love it.
They will, there, it's. That's why we're talking.
I think he's buried in Newport.
Okay.
I will, I will ask Julie to know.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Trudy.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, I'm really excited. Me and America.
One time coming.
Me and America have been working it for the last five years. And it's incredible that it took so damn long.
Uh, well, it was incredible that it hadn't been done before.
Agreed.
Yeah, I remember our first conversation, my first word was what?
Yeah, exactly. Uh, but, uh. Appreciate the city council's support in purchasing the sign or allowing the city to purchase the sign and support going forward. This is a right that need, you know, wrong, you need to right it.
Yes. Yep.
So, thank you very much.
When I was at the small cities meeting, I mentioned this to all the counselors and stuff there. You have all the, can you send out a message? They wanted to know when it was, so if they can make it, they wanted to make it for this.
Okay, um, Lisa, can you send that out? Just send it to the recorders of the other cities.
Perfect, thank you.
Great. Let's see, Mike.
Uh, Mayor Council, um, I did send by the first, the letter to FEMA. Notifying them of our option and. I received an email when we received the city Toledo communication regarding pre-implementation compliance measures. The city has been defaulted to the permit by permit approach. And I responded that, um. I acknowledged receipt of the email below as provided in the correspondence. City is affirmatively does not. Adopt any three pickums. I asked the floodplain administrator for region ten, what was the legal authority? FEMA to enforce the pickums. And, uh. I got a, I got another response that was, uh. What I would expect, a, uh. Eric, uh, thank you for your email. Region ten's committed to providing ongoing technical assistance. All communities implementing pickums. Now, that's, that's very today.
You know Newport is just going along with it?
They are, because they don't read the paperwork.
Okay. And I, and I sat through the, I went this morning to, I did not realize that was the purpose of it, but I went to the. County Commissioner meeting this morning thinking it was the county attorney. Meeting with a bunch of contractors as I was told and there were, it was standing room only and both. Sets of double doors were open on either side and people were out in the hall. And a speaker out the back and, uh, after the staff presentation and the first one or two, three minute. Presentations by the public, I left, um. And, uh. I think they will probably adopt the ordinance. But, but the, the property rights letter that we received, um. I think kind of confirms that we're, we're doing the right thing. Uh, uh, I mean, we're, we can, we can spar back and forth and, and it will give us time. And in the meantime, we're. The eighteenth will bring you that ordinance that has a safe harbor, that has staff which. Arlene and Justin have been instructed, you know, any floodplain permits from here forward where. Requesting a biologist, um. Sign a letter that there's no take of endangered species and since under the Endangered Species Act. It's the incidental take permits, the only permit they have, um, we're kind of crossing our i's and dotting our t's. But we're making sure that we're complying with the environmental requirements of the federal laws exist now, not the made up pickums.
Thank you.
So that's kind of where we are and, uh. Yeah, we'll see how it plays out and, and at any time, it's, it is kind of a choose your own adventure thing and. And even the, the first email response when, uh. You know, when we decide we want to say uncle and adopt one, you know, say no development in the floodplain, adopt the. Adopt the model ordinance or the, or the, uh, step by, the permit by permit. Either of those last two requiring and no loss of. Floodplain function related to fish, um, three areas related to fish, uh.
Yeah.
We can say uncle and do that, so. That's kind of all.
What I don't understand is they have all these studies, but they don't have any balance of common sense.
That's better government for you.
It's like, there's no critical thinking skills whatsoever.
I think the critical thinking skills is they want to avoid litigation.
They want to avoid a law, a lawsuit about the lawsuit.
They, well, and they've got one, and so now instead of in two thousand eighteen, they said in their federal lawsuit in Oregon. That we are gonna get through our environmental impact statement, get it approved. Before we push the cities and counties to implement this. And now they've got another lawsuit and they've. And, and another three years by Wyden or, or.
Yeah.
It, it was by Wyden or DeFazio, I can't remember.
It was Wyden.
But, um, another three years, they still haven't complied and, um. And now they've been sued again and they're pushing the cities and counties to introduce these pickums that are. If they were part of a permit or they were part of. The, the law, we, I think you're sound doing it, but, uh. They're, they're not even certain that these pickums. Will comply with. The environmental requirements that they have and, and they haven't even done a draft environmental impact statement.
Haven't done a draft environmental impact statement. They have not run these through their federal committees that they're supposed to run them through before they are adopted. They haven't done that. They have not, uh, applied the same standards to all the states around us that have salmon. And all the other things that are listed in that lawsuit. So, I mean, they are, they're in violation of so much stuff. It's like, well, we'll, we'll just throw it out there and see if anybody will bite.
Yeah, no, that, that's.
And it's.
They're, they're just.
A waste of our time and our money.
It is. And, and, and it's a. It's a putting the liability on us as we restrict property, right?
Exactly.
Under Oregon law and. I think there's eleven. NFIP policies right now in the city. It's, I think it was two million four hundred some thousand dollars, but, um. I, I just, I don't want to be in a place where we're. Taking away property interests.
Well, and look at our major industry.
And where is it sit? Smack dab in the whole thing. And, and this model ordinance has no fill. So now you can get a, you can get a fill permit and, and actually raise the earth. Up a foot above the base flood elevation. And prior to this last summer, you could, you could do a map amendment and get. Get that area actually taken out of the floodplain and this last summer they stopped doing the. The couple different types of low mark, the, the map amendments and, um. This ordinance that they're pushing on the cities and counties, this last June fifteenth. Is when we first got notice, um. Doesn't allow any fill, so you could no longer put dirt to raise it around because you're, you're maintaining space. For fish if there ever is a flood.
So the bank across from. The post office is actually conforming because it's on pilings, right? And the fish can swim under it if it floods. Isn't that what they're going for?
As much free, so it's almost filings.
Under the, under the ordinance or under this permit by permit assessment and habitat. And habitat assessment and mitigation. Under either way, it's no net loss of, of function. So it's much like the no net loss of water with the, with the port when they put in the two pilings.
Right.
You're, you're gonna have to show. You have to show that those pilings are offset somehow. So, so do I think that the answer is? No, if the ordinance were in effect, we could never build the, the, uh, tennis courts. I think we probably could. Because. The, the waterway is there and on either side, we could put the pilings. To, 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 to basically rise above. Uh, ab- above where the water would go, um, so, so I don't know that it's never, but, um. It's never in the sense that you build a regular foundation and.
Yeah.
You could just all tell when you're doing it.
Oh, no, that's worth.
No, that's not it, but you know, do it now and then.
So, so Clatsop County and, and I think, uh.
Tillamook.
Tillamook.
City County, Tillamook County, uh, most of the cities in Clatsop County, most of the cities in Tillamook County. Um, there are, I, I think we're gonna be the only one in, in Lincoln County. Lincoln City is considering it. They're in the middle of what they're gonna do.
Newport.
That's because they don't read their paperwork. They don't know you couldn't dredge.
I am not gonna comment on Newport. Just because. Um, but most, so the cities of Coos Bay, North Bend are both enjoining it. Uh, Brookings Harbor, those two communities are enjoining the lawsuit. Um, and then there are several within the valley that are jumping on because they're in there. So all that wonderful flatland, any place where there's an intermittent stream, in other words, if it gets wet for two months a year, it's called an intermittent stream. And it's of the hundred and seventy-five feet on either side of that. So all that wonderful flatland where they need to build housing. Goes bye-bye. So, yeah. There's a lot of us jumping on this bandwagon because it just, it is ridiculous.
It's federal, overreach, state or county authority.
That's not it, that, okay.
That, that minimizes it.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
No.
All right.
Nick Ross, counsel. Uh, I do have a couple of items.
No more bad news.
First. Um, I just want to update counsel, um, we are still actively working on the audit. I am still hopeful that I will have it ready by the December eighteenth meeting, but I want. To let you know that I am not one hundred percent on that. We are working hard and fast. Um, not only with everything going on this year. Um, or currently right now, but there's just some extra things that are causing it to take a little bit more time this year. Um, one, having a couple new managers in key purchasing positions. There's a lot of documentation that they didn't have handily available. So it's taken a lot of time to. Find things that I think this is a steep learning curve and once they are aware of. What they need to be providing every year, I think this will go a little smoother next year. Um, also, we have to provide a lot of information regarding the employee theft that occurred during this last fiscal year. Um, and additionally, we are, um, receiving or anticipating receiving a. Rather large reimbursement for ice storm expenses and I've been working actively with FEMA throughout the summer and even currently. And we almost have final numbers, but there's a lot of information to provide with that as well, so, um, I have been. Corresponding with our auditor and having phone calls. She still thinks we can get it done in time. I'm hesitant about our meeting date. Um, but we did have a conversation and she said if we need to, we can file an extension. There's no penalty, there's nothing, no problem. So we're doing the best we can, but if we need to, we'll just file that extension and get it. Get it to you in January. So, that's where we are with the audit, um. There is something else I just wanted to bring to counsel's attention. Last. See if I can get my days straight by blurring together. As you can imagine. Um, we had. I can't remember the exact date now, but. One of our local businesses on Main Street, um, the bus, the building owner did request a fire inspection. Fire code inspection for work that he was having done. Um, I do know that there have been rumors going around town. Rumors going around town, the local business owners, I've heard a few of those come back through some of you. Brought to them to my attention and heard them other roundabout ways. Um we do have a business owner who's not happy right now.
It would be just before November twenty-first.
Yeah. So I won't say the twentieth, but I'm not a hundred percent on that. Um. So. Our previous fire inspector um had inspected this property. Only or the business in this property one time when they obtained their business license um. And since the owner is doing other work, he called our fire department to have another inspection done, as he should have. And our current interim fire chief has been conducting our fire inspections. For the last couple of months. Um he is certified to conduct residential, commercial, and has almost completed his. Large industrial certification that will be completed in January, but because he doesn't have that top level yet, he invited the state fire marshal to join him. To make sure. He didn't miss anything. Um so our interim chief and the state deputy fire marshal were there um. Made some observations and felt the need to go in and inspect a restaurant at the street level because based on what they saw outside. Um there were fourteen violations found in this particular business. Um. Most of them minor, and they're actively trying to work with. This owner has been given a report, given a deadline, um but one of the things that was found was they were living in the garage. The bottom level illegally. They were notified by the state fire marshal that can't do that. Um we're trying, there's a lot of health and safety issues with. The location of where they are residing. Um there's a lot going on, they were, but. With that person being told they can't live there, they're obviously very upset. Um there's also been some confusion. From this particular business owner. He was under the impression that the state fire marshal was our employee and I've.
Because they share a name.
They share a first name. Um I've heard quite a bit. About this sense. Um I, we are working with business owners. I do want council to be aware. That we, our main street is on the state fire marshal's radar. We are aware that there are possibly multiple persons living in commercially zoned and coded businesses. Illegally.
On the upper floor.
No.
Okay, cuz that we we our code says you can do that. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that, okay?
This first business that had no sprinklers or no eaters.
Right, but you understand what I'm saying, right? Upper floors, we have that specifically in our code. The base floor is supposed to be commercial and the bottom floor is supposed to be commercial.
So.
Conversion, you still need to get a building permit. Now check the life fire safety issues.
Right.
Such as egress.
We are, we're having meetings, we're going to be working with business owners, um but I I do want council to be aware that we are going to have to be do. Conducting further inspections of some of these businesses. I'm sure there are particular property and business owners um on Main Street. That are not gonna be happy because we are. And I know you all are aware of some of the issues that have been out there for quite a while. We have unpermitted and um illegal. Occupancy.
So my son, who was in this particular business owner's place with a couple of his friends, enjoying a meal. And somehow the business owner realized that that was my son. And proceeded to let him have it. Proceeded to go on and on telling everybody else that was in there how he knows the city council is under investigation for theft. Oh, it just went on and on. There was not one true word spoken. And my son, you know, and and my son's just like, I don't know what you're talking about, dude, whatever. And then um. And so I don't know what was more said from there, but he was upset about it, and I'm just like, I'm really sorry. But um just so you know, we're all a bunch of thieving lunatics, so.
Oh, yeah.
You have to ignore it.
Well, I mean, for slander.
My Facebook messenger on my private, and I've tried getting it through to a particular person, and I'm about to lose my shit on him. I don't care about this recording. But he's messaging my private account, even though I told him, don't message that account, message my city council account. Right, but he's still opening up my private account, and it's like this long of a bunch of like all false rumors. Sexual interactions, I mean, it's it's the rumor mill in Toledo is really bad right now, and if people actually cared enough. They'd show up at this meeting.
I've been told that city council doesn't know what's going on, that the people out there know what's really going on, and it's like.
Gee, where have we heard this before?
And I I do anticipate with both with employee incidents and. Further inspections and enforcement, um that's very possible, it's gonna get worse before it gets better. There are gonna be some ticked off individuals.
Ticked off individuals, no matter what we do, we know things are gonna blow up.
Those two people right there, but for some reason, they just don't get it.
Yeah, I keep reminding people, you know, come through the proper channels. We're happy. I'm not gonna discuss other. Businesses' information with other people who are related in any way, just wanna know stories. Um but if these persons are interested in getting the appropriate help, they will come. Things right way. Um this is a city government and we have to function as such. We do need to protect ourselves. Um our interim chief is working with um. Code enforcement, planning department, the deputy fire marshal, we're trying to identify. Um what needs to be done, start working with these owners and, you know, we don't, we're, I mean, honestly, the state would like to come down like a hammer. Um she was carrying Main Street or concerns that Main Street could potentially be similar to the. Go ship fire in Oakland in twenty sixteen, in which um if any of you aren't aware, um in twenty sixteen, there was a fire. Illegal use of a building, it was zoned industrial and people were living in it. There's all kinds of things going on. Thirty-seven people were killed. Um the city had received ten complaints previously and had not acted. To correct what was going on. Due to the incident and the loss of life, this ended up going to trial um and actually. Fire officials and city officials who knew of this issue ended up serving jail time. For inaction, so this is very serious. I have my interim fire chief going, I'm not going to jail. We're dealing with this, and I completely back him in this, so we are gonna be trying to work.
And again, if we go after one, we have.
We have to after all.
We cannot treat people differently.
Exactly.
Well, we can have compassion for the fact that they're in a situation where they're. Where they are, but we have to. They need to work with us to get out of that.
They do. So we've identified the top three um. Businesses that we believe there are health and safety issues, and we're gonna start working with them first, and then we will go from there. But our our goal is to work with people, try and build bridges and try and rectify situations.
Good thing you're talking about about a business.
Okay, it's okay, Jack. Any other joyful news?
That's all I have for one night.
This, see, not bad news.
Counselor comments, I'll start with counselor next.
I think I've kind of touched on that. Um that was the one thing that I was wondering at, it's that um. Stories are wild. Um. You don't think about us being a parent, how it slacks back on our kids, but it does. So anyway, yeah, I am. How much love that. But other than that, uh well, yeah, he might get a visit from me, but continue, I'll just leave it at that.
I hear you.
And. And for the record, my son is autistic, so I do not appreciate it.
Exactly.
And um. So, yeah, so other than that, no, the training was good yesterday. I know we were all there. Um. I was relieved to find out that the one that public meetings training, though they're saying it's required that, you know, we're we're gonna have time. So that was, um that's a requirement, so we'll be looking forward to and um. Other than that, I I think I got I got quite a bit from the training. Um. I got quite a bit from talking with the other counselors in the other cities too, realizing that we're sharing a lot of the same frustrations. Um. I also realized that maybe we weren't work more cohesively as a council than some do. Um. I was a little surprised to hear some of the stories. And um I was kind of disappointed, actually. Um. I, yeah, so so that was interesting, but um. So, yeah, going there and coming back from it and, you know, talking to the people there, I really came back with pride for our town, for one thing. Um that we are working so well together, I mean, and also, you know, with the renewed. Interest on serving, I guess, kind of because it's like, yeah, you know, we're on track, we're doing good things and we're gonna keep doing it, so um. That's about it. I can't think of anything else important. I haven't had enough sleep lately like everybody else, so.
Jackie?
Nothing for me?
I don't have much. Um one thing I took from yesterday was the ethics training. That frickin squirrel decided to eat some electrical wires and bands, so they canceled the ethics training there. It was the one thing I was looking forward to. And he decided to electrify things. Um. Well, I have much. Um if anybody that congratulates you two and comments on gift reelected. Any of you that did not go to the last convention in band, if you can make it to Portland, do so. It's an eye-opening educational thing, seriously, if you can make it, make it. That's all I got.
Jackie?
Okay.
Okay. Counsel, President Bush.
So, help me out. Attorney Adams, um. From what I'm hearing from Ron, and I feel like this is like veranda. Information, and this is for your husband. Um the. The murder house, which is the house across from a wall, with the falling down wall, we call it the murder house, because there was a murder there in the eighties. Um and then the property across from. Mugglys and even, what do they call it, the old um.
Dark Holiday?
Dark Holidays, yeah. So from what Ron has been telling me. Because they are banked on, we cannot go after them the same way you go after a private owner. Our hands are kind of tied, is that correct? And somebody told him, I don't know if it was you or somebody else, made a comment that the best thing we can do is pull together. And write letters for legislators, trying to get the state law changed on how banks. Are treated in these matters because they're somewhat protected, is that not true?
That's not something I told them.
He heard that from someone, and I was like, okay, so can we come up with like a form, and I mentioned this to you yesterday. A form letter that when people ask about these properties, say, please write a letter to your. You know, so we can, because I just feel helpless. I hate looking at that stupid house.
Part of that house across from a wall is um. It was in a probate. It 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 was in litigation, and and I think the amount was four hundred and something thousand dollars.
Which is insane.
And. The the person who was. The person died, and now it's in a probate, so now you have to get an executor to represent the estate. To continue with the litigation, so um.
Can we not just cite the estate?
That would be cited in the court.
You probably.
Every time I walk outside, I have to look at it. It's in front of my house. It's, I hate it.
I know I provided the the name of the bank and contact information. Ron and I looked that up and I gave it to him. Part of the. You you know, I think whatever financial resources we put into it. We're we're going to. And and part of the issue is I didn't want to, after looking at it, I didn't want to. Cut away the bank. That has come over the sidewalk because I didn't wanna buy the liability of it raining and the whole. The whole front sliding and and it tipping.
And it already has, like.
And it's, I've I've been.
And they'll hold us accountable if the house lives anymore. If we clean the front, then it'll look like people in the front. It was us that made.
I've been in the basement and, yeah, it's it's. It's sliding pretty.
Yeah.
It's the driveway. Goes into the garage and that's the basement, so there's a floor down there, and then up at the ground level where the hill is, is actually the first.
So. What I need to know from you, Mike, okay? And don't spend a lot of time on it, just, I just need to know, yea or nay, them up, them down. Are banks and estates and those type of situations entities, are they held? To a different standard than a straight owner with a D? Because if they are, because Doc Holliday has driven me nuts since it. It's, I mean, it's happened twice since I've lived here.
What's Doc Holliday?
That's the one on the corner.
Right before you.
Before you get into town.
Hello, the house playing you a bass.
No.
No, no. Okay, so you come around the corner and you hit um the auto repair, then you hit Mugglys, the house on the corner.
Right before.
Isn't that right across from Mugglys?
You drive further up and it's on the other, it's on the left as you're going out of town.
They were.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I I've done a bunch of probates, judicial, nonjudicial, foreclosures, I I mean, you. Estates.
But as I understand, so here's what I'm driving. What I'm driving at is that. I have a good working relationship with a center and senator and a representative and a few other people in Salem. That if I have an issue like this that we're dealing with, I am sure that it's being dealt with by municipalities. Across this state. And so one of the ways you get legislation passed is you don't make things a one-off, you make things. Uh bills that will affect a broad amount of people so that you can get broad support for making it happen. But I need to know what the issue is. Is the issue that we can't go after them because the bank is in charge? Is it because they're in a state? What is the legal reason we can't cite their butts into court?
Yeah.
And make them do their due diligence.
I've never heard the.
And maybe.
To a different legal standard with the banks.
He heard it at the um. Conference he went to for. I need to ask him again, but I was like, maybe we should start writing letters.
If you guys can just get me.
Yeah.
A.
Try to figure it out.
Listen, just a thumbnail of it, okay? I will get my contacts and we'll get to work on it, okay? I don't need it fleshed out, I just need thumbnails, okay?
But is the problem this? Is the problem that the person has died? And yes, it technically would be in probate, but there's nobody to handle the probate, like there was nobody to inherit.
On that one case.
Well, that's.
Like bank has Doc Holidays.
Okay.
The banks have a couple other places around. That's what I'm getting at, is I need to find out the thumbnail is what are all these.
Sometimes, yes, you have the last owner in the chain of title, whether it's a couple and they're both deceased. Or one individual and they're deceased. And the family member doesn't have, really have any incentive to go start a small state affidavit or or a formal probate. And. There's just, you know, cuz there's no money in.
Yeah.
Uh you know, you have liens that exceed the value of the property. And and so it came, you know, for a creditor, I've done that, initiated a probate. And um. But um you 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 often find that situation where nobody's been appointed as I'm the responsible.
And so what happens then?
It sits there, it sits there until it's until it's tax foreclosed.
Mike?
Yeah, I think that we might wanna entertain having some kind of fine for zombie houses.
We have several.
Yeah, we do have several, and they are a hazard for.
Livability code answers that. But the question is, is how do you, how do you attach the fine and who do you attach it to?
Right, yeah, I would say we attach it to the to the bank.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. It's like, can we, right? Because we should have been able to do this to the Doc Holliday site forever anyway, but now with the livability code. But now with the livability code, we should really be able to attach it to it.
And I could tell you that there are people. That have squatted in that building.
Oh, yeah.
And I've gone in that building and it's. Be, it's flea infested and I got attacked by fleas. Uh it is a hazardous place to be in. And it is on the verge of falling over.
Again.
Yeah, the left wall is falling over, yeah.
Okay, so that that's what I'm getting at, is that we've gotta be able to find a way so that it doesn't become our liability just because we're the city.
Is there a way to get declared a public nuisance or a public hazard?
But then we take on the liability for it.
Then you, we've gotta do something about it.
It's not something we could use our U R.
Granted, but it's better than potentially somebody being squatting in there and having the building fall and kill them.
But that, okay.
I mean, I'm just taking a, eventually, not talking right now and I'm not taking the same light.
No, no, I know, I know you're not. I'm I'm just. But that's just, yeah, if somebody owns it and we go in and burn it down, then we are liable to pay them what that's. Quote worth unquote, two dollars. Okay, then we don't have the money to do that.
No, we don't.
No.
So we've gotta find a way to get these, the property owners, whether they're a bank, a state, whoever, to do their due diligence.
Have we made the initial contact attempts?
I I believe he did write a letter to them.
I know the murder house, thanks, a few times Ron was chasing for a long time.
The the place, um. Two story, uh what's the name of the people? Judy wanted to get rid of, dragged down Water Road and there to the right.
Oh, the one, the one that's almost gonna fall down any day now?
Yeah, same thing, same thing. Husband and wife on a deed, both deceased.
Yep.
The daughter is.
Yeah, kids unable to.
Yeah, I I believe that this is a good topic and I think it should warrant a future discussion.
We've had it before, we should probably have it again.
Yeah.
But I I think that it would warrant a very, it's a very good discussion and I think it would.
Can we bring that back?
Yeah, let's.
When's our next work session?
Our next workshop.
Work session was canceled.
Session won't be until January.
Okay. This is a holiday.
Yeah.
We have one more meeting as well.
Yeah. But we, bring it back in January, let's get some of these, some of these places actually, you know, delineated out. This. With pictures, this property is this, this property is that, this property is the other thing, yes, my.
And I can have Ron come in and kinda give a presentation of the problem.
That would be beneficial.
They're, he gets more informed about what's going on.
Um but Mike Adams, if you can just get me just a quick thumbnail on how the state code handles this. And if a upgrade to state code would help fix this. Cause we can get, we have a long second, it might not happen till June, but we can at least get it going.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
That was my only thing.
Okay, well, thank you. You stole, you stole part of my thunder, I love it. I love it. Um first off, I wanna reiterate about yesterday's um. Meeting, and I wanna tell you all, I am so proud of this city.
Me too.
Okay? And Jim can attest to this, in the twenty plus years that we've been doing things with small cities, with anything LOC related. We've never had more than three or four of us go to one of these meetings. We had everybody, we had every council member, we had our interim city manager, we had the attorney.
That's because Lisa said it was mandatory.
We had Lisa there. Stu wasn't there cuz Stu was on drugs that morning. He had surgery the night before.
Thank you.
He was in the hospital.
Well, he should have at least zoomed in.
Yeah, no, no, I've had that surgery and I don't know if it's, and his is, was more complicated.
You couldn't actually see me, could you?
No, no. Um, but. Counselor elect Keating was there, who was gonna take his spot in January, so that's why I say all of us were there, okay? I think that said a lot, not just to the people who are doing the training, but I think it said a lot to this county. Okay, that. We can be proud of where we live. Because we wanna do a better job and that's why you go to these trainings, is to do a better job, to try and not make the same mistakes that keep getting made over and over again. Very proud of all of you and thank you ever so much for all going. I'll be honest, it was the best training of those I've been to since I've come back into office.
Thank you.
Um so in, in over six years, that's the best one that they've done. It was concise, it was to the point. You know, they got more into that, yes, they got a lot done yesterday, which I. Uh and we got out fifteen minutes early. Um, secondly, um. You're gonna hear a lot of rumors about ODOT over the next six months until. Things get figured out in the legislature about their funding. Um, one of the things you're gonna hear is that they're not icing roads cuz they don't have the money. Folks, they have the money to do their maintenance stuff. The problem is, is at the end of this fiscal year, they gonna need a lot more money because they're pulling out of everything to just do the maintenance right now. So you're gonna hear a lot of rumors, they're not all true, it's kinda like what goes on in town. Um, they are icing the roads, the county is icing the roads, de-icing the roads, right? We don't salt. Spraying it down, right, to make sure. Um, so. You know, don't. Don't jump on a bandwagon when it comes to this stuff until you check the facts. Cuz it's gonna, and it's going to be contentious in this room. Uh one of the things that people are talking about. Is doing a mileage tax on vehicles instead of the gas tax and some of us pointed out. That two thirds of this state lives a hundred miles from a lot of services. Um, so. You're really super affecting two thirds of the state, the people that live in that, in those areas, and we're one of them.
Take me forever to raise Daisy to work in the mornings.
We're not gonna talk about Daisy, our thousand pound jewels.
She's so slow.
Um, so those, that's coming up. Um. Mike, um I don't know how much you know this, but you are more appreciated than you know. And I'm hoping that when the salary things come comes back, we can actually get a lot of this stuff right. I need to talk to Amanda about a couple of ideas we had a few months ago about how do we move forward? If we can, whether we, you know, can we afford to do it, blah, blah, blah. Um, once I know the financials, then we'll make it broader known. Okay, but we, I gotta go over the financials, gotta find out if we make it work or not. Um, the state has said that ODF property. They are seri- and this is direct quote, seriously considering just giving it to us. As long as we just use it for housing.
You can't use it for a new city hall?
No. We need housing.
Yeah.
Desperately, okay, so um. We are able to get some, you know, yes, state government is a bureaucracy, but we can get through it and get some things done right. And this is one of them I think we'll get right.
Is that at least out of the floodplain?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Although, no, don't get me started.
It's the property up above.
Don't get me started that my house, the bottom of my house is lost. And I live up. On that hill.
So to do, like apartments up there, we'd have to raise the building that's there and start over, right?
Um, that's a possibility. I mean, there is enough room up there.
There's a ton of room.
There's a ton of room up there. And so the the issue that the state's grappling with, which is understandable, okay? Is that they own, so the White House that's across from ODF, they don't own, that's private property.
Okay.
The old church that's in the back, that's private property.
And is the church still a church?
No, it's a residence, it's a residence, no. Okay, but the bill, but the house that overlooks Business Loop Twenty. That's on ODF property, they rent that out. Okay, and so they wanna be able to hold them harmless, which I completely understand. So that's one of the things that they're trying to figure out, how do we do this?
Okay.
How do we split that off? Do they wanna buy the place, blah, blah, blah? Okay, so, but it's in the works. Uh they're not gonna be moving that office until at the soonest end of summer next year. That's if everything falls into place. Because they're still building over Newport and they don't know when that's gonna ever be done. Okay, so we've got time. There are issues to be discussed and to figure out how it's gonna work. But the state has said that they are seriously considering doing that. Because someone reminded them that if housing is our number one priority, then maybe we ought to do some housing with surplus state land. He brought that up.
Great concept.
I know. The umbrella parade and the Christmas party and all of that, I'll I'll be honest, it grew again and it was a hoot.
I see.
Um. It was really a lot of fun, it was cold as blank. Um but it was a lot of fun, a lot of people participated, yes, it was cold but no rain. Uh, I wanna thank the high school and junior high choir, they have a combined choir. Uh so they sang, they led us all in Christmas carols, um it went really well. Um Sweet Adelines were up at the Elks, the Serenades there, that was really good. Um. You know, one of the things that make living in this town so special is how. Even though all the stuff that's going on outside of this community is going on. We are still a community, we can still come together, we can still celebrate life in a small town and be good neighbors with each other. And that's why the whole housing, uh the. The zombie house is one, that's why it irritates me. Because it's sucking life out of a community that we can't afford to have what happened.
And it's property, we could build a nice new house on it for people to live in.
Yep.
That's the.
So. With that.
I get one.
We can all sign it on the eighteenth, or we can leave it here and she can have us all come by.
We would like to do that. So I'm thinking about going and buying a Get Well card for Stu. And then maybe I could bring it. To the city hall. Yeah, I can have him run it back over. I'll have, also I'll pick one up tomorrow and then we can all sign it.
I was gonna tell you later, so it would be a surprise, but that's okay.
We can have that right up front and people can stop in as they're able to sign it. That's it, okay.
Did Lisa say something about us having a meeting next week? And scheduling it either Tuesday or Thursday.
Only cuz we were gonna certify the election results, but we we were still up in here as to when they were gonna be certified.
I just know, so talking in an executive session though.
You're good.
I just wanted to make.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? There you go, Mike.